The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I call this city council meeting in City Hall Council Chambers at 389 Spruce Street on the second floor of Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505, Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. It's seven o'clock, although it is currently 7:15. To order, if the clerk would be so kind, is to take roll.
Yes. Bill Kueckie?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Wheezy, you're here? You're muted.
Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Buganam?
Present.
All right. First, we have the approval of minutes for January 7th, 2025, special meeting minutes, as well as January 7th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Does anybody have any?
I submitted, and they were taken care of. Thank you.
All right. Do we accept the minutes back from the nation?
Yes.
Okay. And no correspondence today. First, we have on our public hearings is, the first one is an ordinance authorizing an airline agreement and lease with SkyWest Airlines. If anybody wishes to speak on this during the public hearing, they may do so now. And I close that public portion. Next, for our public hearing, we have an ordinance confirming the sale of property in the Fourth Ward District to Jones Place LLC, and authorizing execution of deed. If anybody wishes to speak on this matter, they may do so now. And close. First, for our unfinished business, we have consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing an airline agreement and lease with SkyWest Airlines. And I believe we have our airport director here. If you'd like to please come on up and tell us all about it.
So this is a? Yeah, a lease with SkyWest, they took over service Morgantown starting on December 13th. This is a continuation of previous airline leases we've had with the essential air service carriers in Morgantown. This one, again, is just like the previous. It is dependent on US DOT certification of EAS service. So this agreement is in length of that service. It brings approximately $21,000 a year to the airport's budget.
All right. Any questions before motion?
I just have a comment. If you're flying through United, this lovely carrier, and you want to go through and till somewhere, to somewhere, and the price is super high, split it and look at the cost because to Chicago, it's roughly $200. And I was flying to one city past there, like an hour flight, and it was adding like $450 or $500 or something. So I could fly for $200 to Chicago and take a bus for $31 and fly reasonably. And otherwise, I thought, oh, no, what are they doing to our flights? And it's like, no, it's $200 or $250 or something to Chicago. So do a little bit of extra research so you can fly out of our airport and out of some other airport north of here.
What else? There's round trip airfare currently in Colorado by 2:50. I'm excited.
Just another testimony here. Recent CDB meeting, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, they were very pleased with what they had seen so far. They're looking forward to its continuation.
Move to approve.
Second.
John, I think you're good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I know we all just had our conversation, so if the clerk would be so kind.
Yes. Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, passes 7-0. Next, we have the consideration of approval of the second reading of an ordinance confirming sale of property in the Fourth Ward District to Jones Place LLC, and authorizing execution of deed, the first read in January 7th, 2025. City Attorney, is this a? Am I, Wheeze, can you turn your mic off? I think I might going. Good? City Attorney, do you?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance reauthorizing a prior sale of property wherein the deed was not reported by the purchaser, as described at your last meeting. We asked the city council to pass the ordinance, and that will authorize the city manager to execute a confirmatory deed that clears up the title records as prior. The city did confirm that it received the payment of the purchase price for the prior sale.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any? Good?
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Saleen?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Buganam?
Yes, passes 7-0. Boards and commissions? Okay. And we have our public portion, which shall be subject to the rules established by the council and adopted by resolution. Those wishing to speak, we're given an opportunity to sign up, although that does not mean you will not have an opportunity if you have not. We ask that you stay to four minutes, do not address council members directly. Please state your name and address when you come up to speak. I open the public portion now. The first person we have up is Raj Sundaram. I said that correctly?
Yes.
All right.
So my name is Raj Sundaram, or you can call me Raj. So I'm not sure this is the right place to talk about this subject to begin with. So I have a business on High Street, and there is one particular challenge I am facing now, faced a lot, but that I want to bring up to somebody. Is it the right place to begin with? Sure? Okay. So pardon my English, I'm not a native English speaker, so I'll try to talk slow, okay? I've got some notes to help me also. So I own the Thai restaurant at 361 High Street, Chang Thai Restaurant. So I've been there for almost, going into the 14th year right now. So I and my wife moved from Northern Virginia around 2010, 2011, because downtown was such an extremely vibrant place at that point of time. Things have changed a lot, I don't, not going to get into all that, how the downtown has changed significantly, in my opinion. You know, I've been there for, one of the longest standing tenants right now, I think. Besides the chain businesses, if you look at the mom and pop shops in downtown, it's just the Great Wall of China and Casa di Amici and Gibbys are the only three I can think of, which has been here from the time I moved in. And I was making a list, for some reason the other day, I could write down 65 food establishments, which I personally know has come and gone during the time I've been here, okay? So that's a different subject, I don't want to get into that, that a lot. But being there for 13 years, obviously you notice a lot of things, right? It's just like your child growing up, you don't miss anything. So there are a lot of things I've noticed. Obviously downtown has changed a lot, and that's something I think a lot of you and a lot of people know about it, and a lot of committees and people who care about downtown are trying to do a lot of things. I'm aware of some of those things, okay? But the thing I wanted to mention, mention today is specifically, so I have been somehow able to survive for 13 years. It has not been easy the last seven, seven years, even before COVID. You know, I started noticing a lot of things in downtown which were slowing down the business significantly. So, but I have somehow managed to survive, and I keep thinking, how, how was I able to survive when so many businesses come and go, right? So sometimes you are so busy, you don't realize what you're doing even correctly, you know? So I realized that I'm doing some things, made a lot of changes, and made my business more relevant for today's world. You know, unlike some businesses, they don't change much. So I changed a lot of things, and two things which are significantly important, which helped me manage to survive even today are, I spent a lot of time and money and efforts on making my business more approachable online, okay? As a restaurant, this is happening throughout the country. People like to get things, get things delivered. It is not specific to Morgantown at all. Everyone wants to get things delivered. Convenience is a big name of the game right now when it comes to business. So for a mom and pop restaurant, I have a very high-end online presence. So I spend a lot of time and money, and that is the main reason I realize now why I have survived, because when I look at my numbers in the last five years, my dine-in has gone down from 80% to 20%. My takeouts and deliveries have replaced a dine-in, that's around 80% right now. So that brings me to the point I was talking about. So, so I thought that this will continue and I should be okay, because the food is good, otherwise you can't survive in this industry for 14 years, okay? So food is good, people don't want to come to downtown for a lot of reasons, but they're able to come and pick up and go, and I'm happy with that. I know, I don't, I don't really mind, as long as I'm selling good food to the customer, I'm okay. So actually, takeout is even better, is that okay?
You can, I'll give you a few more seconds.
Okay, it's all right. So what I'm coming to right now is the last few months or two years, when I talk to customers, I'm hearing this new complaint a lot. A lot of people who have been coming and picking up from me in the last few years are not even coming for takeouts and pickups anymore. They're very reluctant to come. The main reason is they're complaining about parking, okay? Now, I try to understand this, I talk to people, and what I'm hearing is two things, I'll make it very short now, two important things. One is, a lot of parking has been lost right across my business, okay? Right in front of that Gibbys and, you know, you, there's some outdoor seating which has been created, which has been done with good intentions, I completely understand that. You know, we want to bring people to come downtown, sit outside and eat. But I've been there for so long, I've been noticing, only a few days in a year, people are really sitting down there and eating. Summertime, the students are not there. The weather is not convenient to eat outside in Morgantown throughout the year. So just for a few days, countable days, people are sitting outside and eating, and the rest of the year, it's completely empty. It's almost like five or six parking spaces I'm losing, and my customers are complaining that, Raj, we love your food, we used to come and eat here, now we just want to quickly come and park and pick up the food and go. Even that is not possible. You have to come to downtown, you have to go around the block five times to find a parking. So there's only three parking spots right across, across my restaurant during daytime, which is available. In the entire block that I'm in, there are only three parking spots in front of Cold Stone, which is available for parking. Right in front of me is completely trucking, truck loading zone till 2:00. So I'm losing my entire lunch customers who used to come and pick up, they're not coming anymore, any longer. That is number one. Number two I wanted to mention is, right in front of my restaurant, it has been a loading, truck loading zone all these years up till 2:00, and I'm okay with that. But what I've been noticing, and what I want to bring it to somebody's attention, that I've been noticing every single day, but it's only people who are there every day can notice this, right? So I'm just going to bring this up. In 2011, when I moved, there were so many bars and clubs and other restaurants, right? So when I come in the morning, till 2:00, there are at least some, 20 trucks moving in and out, you know, offloading beer and all the food for all the restaurants. Now, the overall business, number of businesses in downtown has significantly reduced in that block. So right now, Monday to Friday, if I go from morning till 2:00 in the afternoon, you hardly see two trucks coming and unloading. There is nothing, there is not much action happening like before. Not many bars and pubs are doing well as before. Not many restaurants are there in that block. To have a loading zone occupy seven to eight parking lots right in front of my restaurant throughout the day, completely being unused, it's a thing that I've been noticing for the last few days, whereas I'm struggling to, my customers are struggling to just come and park and go. So I'm having a significant loss of my lunch, takeout customers. It is quite worse now, even delivery drivers are not picking up orders from my restaurant, complaining about the parking problems. You know, they go around the block three times, they say we are wasting money, they cancel the order. Okay, so I don't know the answer to the problem, but I've been there for a long time, I've done everything I can possibly can.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, I did, I did give you some extra time. We're not allowed to respond to any of the comments here.
Understood.
But we appreciate you taking.
So I would love to see whether there's any possibility of getting some, two designated parking for me, for my customers, to come and just pick up the food and go. At least in the evening, or even morning, if that truck loading zone can be changed. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stephanie Hunt.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hunt, 220 Front Street. I spent my afternoon at the warming shelter, just helping out up there, because as we all know, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, it is closed unless there's a volunteer. So I was up there volunteering, and it's kind of scary that if something happens to the volunteer that is there, people are now going to be stuck outside in 12-degree weather. I'm here to advocate on behalf of the volunteers that are there. They really want to know if Catholic charities can get some funding to consider having some people working a day shift, if that's a possibility. They estimate it might be around seven grand to finish out the 56 days left of the warming shelter period. Yeah, so right now, we really need a daytime volunteer, or a full daytime position there, because when it's 12 degrees outside, we, it's, it's really hard to have to tell people, no, you have to leave. And the only option is to now go downtown, but getting from Hazel House downtown isn't always the easiest, especially if the bus isn't, is full or not running at that time. It's very complicated, it's very far away. And then on holidays. Holidays is really hard, because all of the buildings were closed downtown. So from that 8 to 8 period, where did they have to go that was warm? Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the names I have on the list. Is anybody else wishing to speak? Closing the public portion. All right. There are no special committee reports. We have no items on our consent agenda, and no new business, which then takes us to the city manager's report.
All we have to report is, you know, snow removal. We, we continue to be out there removing snow, we'll be out there all day tomorrow. We have a crew out there tonight, starting at 7:00, we'll be out there working. So we'll just continue, if people have, the streets have been missed, we apologize, and then we'll get a truck out there as fast as we can. But it's cold out there, and so things don't, salt doesn't work as well right now, so we're continuing to plow. Tomorrow's going to be cold, but the next day, I think it's supposed to warm up a little bit, so roads should be cleared up mostly by, in two days. That's all.
Question. What is the best way, or your preferred way, for people to report those roads that have been missed?
During the day, I mean, they can, well, at night they can do C-Click Fix. We have someone who monitors that through the day. They can call the garage, talk to our staff out there.
What's that phone number?
I don't call myself all night off, so. It's a phone number. It is, well, they can call 304-284-7412, or they can call.
And that's the garage?
That's Public Works number, one of Public Works numbers.
Hey, David. David, just a guess, but the mic is probably not picking you up very well.
And the other number you can call is 304-291-7465.
Any preference on which of those would work the best?
The second one would probably be the best, and then the first one would be the second.
And that's daytime, during work hours, after hours, it's best to use C-Click Fix.
Yep.
Then again, that number is 304-291-7465?
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed that in Pittsburgh, they're having trouble with.
I noticed that in Pittsburgh, they're having trouble with having enough salt. How are we with our salt reserves?
We have put a pretty good dent in ours, but we are still about half full on each building. So we have about, I'd say, five hundred tons of our treated salt. We have about a thousand tons of regular salt on hand. So we're still, we're still pretty good. I think we'll be all right for the rest of the season. We do have with our contract, a thousand tons on reserve that we can call upon our salt provider to give us if we need more. So, but I think as of now, I think we're perfect.
Good, good, good for that planning. And then the salt shed or salt building in, in Star City, I guess?
Has not been used yet. We are, it still has some, it still hasn't been finished with construction. Had some weather issues, had some construction issues.
I bet.
We still have not had a chance to put it into use yet.
Next year.
Hopefully this season, hopefully it'll snow some more and we'll get a chance to use it. We'll get some salt out there.
Hopefully it'll snow some more.
But yeah.
Thank you.
I feel like there's a tongue twister. Seasonal salt shed, store seasonal.
In Star City?
In Star City.
Seasonal salt shed, store seasonal.
At the Mub, at the Mub facility, we should say that.
Thank you, Damian.
Yep.
And.
Yes, Mayor. I just want to remind folks about some election timelines. Again, our election will be April 29th, 2025. I would like to encourage folks to register to vote if they are not registered to vote. And it's very easy to check. Folks can go on to the West Virginia Secretary of State's website, and that's WBSOS. And they can search voter registration and it should pop up. Click on the link and really all they need is their first and last name and their date of birth. And it will tell them where they're registered to vote. So it's very easy. The city also has that functionality on their website, our, our website at MorgantownWV.gov. Also, the county clerk, Carrie Blaney's website, that has that same link to check voter registration. So our goal is always to increase that voter registration number. We are down a lot since I would say 2018. So just, I want to encourage folks to get on there and check and see where they're registered to vote. And if they're not registered to vote, you can do that online as well. It's very easy. But if someone would like help, they can call our office, the city clerk's office, at three zero four two eight four seven four three four, and we will help them. We will have a drive-through voter registration day on April 7th, which is the last day to register to vote. That will be under the farmer's market, so folks can drive through. We've done that the last two elections and we're willing to help folks get registered to vote. And we take those paper applications down to the county and the county will process them. We are still looking for poll workers and our communications department has done a fantastic job at advertising because once they did a media blast, we, we did get a lot of folks reaching out to us. But we still need people to be poll workers at our election. Eighteen years of old, eighteen years of age. And they must be registered to vote in the county. So again, we have wards two, four, and six up for election this year. And if anyone has any questions about the election, they can check our website under elections or they could certainly call the city clerk's office and we'll take care of any questions they may have.
And just real quick, you said WVSOS?
WVSOS.
So I went to that.
Okay.
And it took me to some unsecured link and then wanted to log in. So I have SOS.WV.gov.
Go to govoteWV.org. That is also the voter registration page for the state of West Virginia.
Go vote.
For the Secretary of State.
Yeah, OVR.SOS.WV. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
All right, and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm providing no phone numbers or links during this report. I, with, with council's approval tonight of the ordinance confirming the sale of property to Jones Place, we'll proceed to prepare that confirmatory circulated to purchasers council, get that executed and request a file stamped return copy so that the city clerk can update those records as well. I also prepared some suggested updates to city council's electronic meetings policy and circulated those to council and staff for any comments. If you have a chance to, to look at that, feel, feel free to send me any if you have them. And also if you have any requests to look at or review other council level policies, including meeting procedures, I'm happy to look at those in conjunction as well, though that's not necessarily required. And otherwise, I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. And on to the city council. Who did we start with last time? We started with you last time, so I'm going to start with you.
Okay. Very little to report. If anybody has a span meeting on your agenda for tomorrow, it would be because span meetings have always been on the fourth Wednesday of the month. There will be no span meeting, probably not until March. And that concludes my report.
Well, I think we should send out a big shout out to those who have been doing the plowing and all of the other services that we need during these cold, cold days and snowy days. I know that there are some issues with trash pickup. And when I have called, which was not today, it was last week, they're doing the best that they can. I do not know a status for that. Maybe when we're done with our comments, if either of you know anything about the status of trash pickup. I know that it's challenging when we're out picking up, knocking on people's doors and asking them to sign a petition to be on the city ballot. And the road is not plowed and the trash cans are out. People are wondering what you're doing there when city services are not in evidence. But I think at the same time, people understand that the roads do get plowed eventually and the trash will get picked up when it warms up and there's a little bit less snow. So I guess that's the end of my report, but it is, it is quite something out there. So if everybody can keep a little, you know, my trash didn't get picked up last time and it's still in front of the house waiting and I'm sure that it will get picked up. I have faith. But it's, it's quite something out there.
May need to throw out first.
Yep.
All right.
To address a couple of the things that were brought up during the public portion, I thought it was, I don't know, serendipitous that the gentleman from Chang Tai came. My husband went downtown last night and picked up Chang Tai and parking is one of his complaints. I know that we used to have additional fifteen minute customer parking spots. I think a few of those were removed after COVID. And that is something that I continually hear from a lot of the, specifically restaurants downtown, is, is they would like spots where people could just park for a few minutes, run in, pick up food and, and be on their way. So I do think that's something we should talk to the parking authority, maybe Dana, and see if there's any options there. Catholic charities, day shelter funding. I have had this conversation so many times with so many volunteers. And I have tried to explain to folks, the request, any request would have to come from Catholic charities. And I had that discussion last week. I spent three hours at the shelter, one day last week, specifically talking with the director of the shelter, Jessica Thompson, and, and told her as much, as of right now, there has been no request that I've been made aware of. So it's not like we could give them money and say, pay some people. Like the request would have to come from them, not just members of the public on their behalf. So definitely make sure that they're aware that that, that would have to be the case. Today, I attended a meeting on food insecurity in Mon County and was asked to speak a little on our pathways to help initiative. It seemed like maybe our communications department had put out a little bit of information and reached out to some of the different organizations, nonprofits, with minimal information and they had a lot of questions. I, I shared Brad's contact information, but I think maybe it would be good if one of our communications people attended the next meeting of that, which we're only meeting quarterly now, it was every six weeks or so. So that probably won't be until April, but I'll certainly pass that along.
Brad is watching.
Brad is, he may not be watching now, but he will be watching tomorrow at the very least. Yeah, tomorrow, just a couple of upcoming events. Tomorrow, Bow Park is hosting the Morgantown Area Partnership Business After Hours at Eureka Cafe from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. If you are a member of the Morgantown Area Partnership, which all city employees are. No?
I don't believe so.
I thought city staff was all welcome to join the partnership, so.
It's open, but non-members pay twenty dollars.
We're members. But the city's members. No?
Always been invited before.
I go. They never charge me. I go, they never charge me. In any case, Bow Park's hosting it tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:00. So if you want to stop in.
You should register.
Oh, you should, you should register. But additionally, they should not be charged because I think we're members.
Correct.
I haven't been charged.
Yeah. We're not charged. Let me see. On Monday, the 27th, from two to seven PM, there is a community visioning session at the Historic Train Depot on enhancing and activating the riverfront zone and rail trail for the warmer parts of the year. So if you have any strong feelings about revitalization of our riverfront, make sure you stop into that between two and seven on Monday, the 27th.
Can we, can we clarify that it's the area kind of between the amphitheater and up Deckers Creek? It's this specific area in there.
And since you brought that up, there's an online survey that they could take if they count to attend.
Yes, and that's been shared out on the city's social media pages. So if you need a link to a survey, on Sunday, the 26th, I guess I skipped over that one to the 27th. But on Sunday, the 26th, the Bow Park Creative Aging Initiative that we, we did a couple of months ago, is having an opening at the Wilds Hill Gallery at two o'clock. Those, I, I've spoken about that a couple of times before. February 2nd is the last day for the ice arena. We will be closing in early February to begin significant improvements of some structural items and some more aesthetic items. And we will be closed from February through October. At six o'clock on Friday, January 31st, the museum is opening, has an opening reception for another exhibit on the Old Stone House. That'll take place from six to nine on Friday. And then on Wednesday, February 5th, we'll be hosting another benefit for the Warming Shelter. We did this two years ago in 2023. Councilor Butcher and I have been working with some community members to get that set up. It'll be from six to nine PM at the Co-op Space down on Pleasant Street. We have businesses who have donated food and drinks. We have musicians and comedians who are donating their time. And we would love to see everyone there.
There's a lot of events, there's a lot coming up for cold weather times.
I was just going to say, just to remind, I won't be at the committee the whole meeting next week. And I don't, I don't have anything else to report.
Just a few things. I did want to, again, give thanks to our city staff and thanks, Damian, for going out and driving a truck yourself to plow. It's good leadership and I appreciate it. And for answering my questions while you're out plowing the road about plowing. It's great, I appreciate it. And yeah, so I, I think there's certainly some, I, I guess to try to help clear up some confusion about, there seems to be some confusion, I guess, at Catholic charities, at least among the staff, about like what our money's going towards. There's been a lot of comments made by staff that just like, like certain supplies, the city needs to get. So the city, just to like clarify, the city's not going to like get supplies at Hazel's pretty much at all. It's, that's like, would be MCR if it's like maybe a logistical or building thing, then just on nonprofits themselves to get whatever supplies might be needed. So we've allocated money that is on a reimbursement basis for the Warming Shelter. And that does include things like supplies that they might need, like water or blankets and things of that nature, not just staffing. And like you said, I, I would appreciate a request for us staff during the daytime. And then something that was brought up earlier. It does, I do think that there is some confusion about the bus pass program. I think like the rollout of ours along with the counties has caused a little bit of like, it's just hard for people to parse what's going on with the buses in terms of the social services. I would, if Brad is listening, maybe suggest that you go to the Family Resource Network meetings where there's a bunch of those folks. And I'm sure Brad's familiar with those being at the United Way before. The other, the final thing I wanted to comment on was a kudos to Kelly Rice. She went and checked on a few people in terms of them still being outside and not being in shelter throughout the day and last night. And she also let me know that the, they will be opening the lobby of the Public Safety Building for people to shelter in overnight tonight, at least tonight. I don't know about tomorrow, but so it's, I think, great initiative on the department's part and, and through that leadership. So I appreciate them doing that. And because as Kelly said, they're acutely aware that the Warming Shelter has been full and we don't want anybody to be outdoors right now at all for any length of time. But that'll conclude my report.
I, I just wanted to say thank you to the public works. I actually got a couple of phone calls in the board saying that they were doing a good job. And even though they said it was difficult to keep up, they, they appreciate the effort. And that's all I have tonight.
I could explain something about bus pass wherever you want to work me in.
With regard to bus passes, just some sort of general information is that because the city had paid for the bus system to continue being free for a while while we were, the bus system on done knots to be free for a while, while we were figuring out what the next step was when different people had deemed that it was too expensive to continue in that way. Then the next system was developed and the county, because the city had been paying for the bus system for that route for a while, then the county agreed to pay for the nonprofits to get the bus passes for the current system. So that's why nonprofits can go to the county and get, actually, they end up going through, through the, through the.
Now.
Yeah, through the bus service, but the county is paying for that. And then the program that the city has is more for some of the frontline, like our social worker and the police department and, and the dispatch has passes. And they're kind of the frontline to get people to the social services where they are giving out more of the long. the long, the 15-day passes and some of the more long-term passes. But our communications department communicates it much better than I, but I just wanted to kind of clarify that it's much appreciated that the county is picking up the tab now for the nonprofits to get. And then they're all collecting data so that they can see that people are using the passes to get to work, and they're not, these passes are not only for the route to go out to Hazel's House of Hope and so on. They're, the passes can be used on any of the routes, and people are using them to get to work, to get to medical appointments, and so they're using more the full bus system at this point than just the one free route that we used to have. So this system, once it's up and working and people are getting to where they need to go and not having to hunt for a pass when they need one, but can, can access it more easily and get used to the system, I think it will be advantageous because people will be able to get to work or get to medical appointments and not just to one or two places on one free line.
As of last week, the Warming Shelter had not had any Bus Passes, and people were hesitant to go because when they would interact with a city employee, they are only given one, and they are afraid that they are going to get to H3 and then be stranded because they do not have a return pass. And if you go at 8:00 p.m. and leave at 8:00 a.m., the other nonprofits are not open. I was also, I spent several hours up there last week, and I was told that firsthand, I was told someone came into City Hall to get a pass and was told, we just gave you a pass last week. So.
Well, that's not how it's designed to work, and from talking to Communications Department directly and asking questions, I think that some of the bugs are being worked out where there'll be more of the passes available at the Warming Shelter, at the Emergency Warming Shelter, and they don't always just give out one pass. They talk to the person and they figure out what they need. So I don't know what happened in that one situation, but that, I think, is not the norm, and that's why you've only heard it once.
I hope you brought that up so that we could have it addressed. It's like, okay, like this isn't the first time we're hearing about it. I think that's important.
Yes.
All right. As for my report, thank you, Stephanie, for volunteering up there. I think, in all of this, that's the one thing that needs to be said, it's pretty much appreciated. As, I would also like to say congratulations on, and I'm using the term retirement loosely, former mayor Ron Justice, who had his retirement party, or not retirement party, his celebration of working, I guess would be the term that he's using last week, and, what else? And then thank you, Damian, and everybody over at Public Works for all the eagle we're doing. I think the biggest thing that I've noticed, and this is also an appreciation, is that a lot of our state roads, people are thinking our city roads, and we help take care of them, so I appreciate you doing that as well in terms of trying to help everyone out. That seems to be the one correction. I feel worse having to make the people with the phone when their most upset, and I tell them it's a state road, but we are helping and trying to take care of those as well. So taking out that extra burden is much appreciated. And with that said, I will stop there since I feel like all our chat is cold weather-related, and if anybody would like to make a motion.
Move that pursuant to West Virginia Code 6-9A4B12, moving to executive session to discuss matters projected by attorney-client.
Second.
All right.